Need it.
Item two, I'd look for an approval of the agenda.
I second it.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, item three, public appearances and citizens comments, the ones here, so go on to approval of the consent agenda.
Almost.
All in favor say aye.
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 Both, motion carries. Item five, new business, consideration discussion operators licensing aisle for Shayna Hudson. Jeff?
I, uh, I recommended the now for this one, uh, they lifted a felony charge and they had, uh, at least two more charges. In and out of, at least four different prisons.
Okay. Okay.
Two different prisons.
Seeing a motion tonight.
Please, yep.
Okay. To approve the denial.
Yes, all that.
Nope, I got it.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Both, motion carries. Item B, consideration discussion water reservoir. Gaila integrator contracts.
Right, I am passing out a memo, I'm very sorry Peggy, I just now realized that you don't have a copy of this, so I apologize. I'll give a brief overview, um, so we have three contracts for our water reservoir project. Um, this is the third contract and this is for SCADA, which is basically the system that allows all of our, uh, water utility infrastructure to communicate with each other, so our staff don't have to go out and, you know, make sure the well's running and make sure their, you know, the levels are correct and things like that. So, um, we decided as part of the water reservoir project that we would get those updated because our current soft, or our current SCADA system is pretty much obsolete, we can't get replacement parts. Um, so we did an RFP, so proposals, uh, for a new SCADA integrator, which is basically the company that will put, implement this new SCADA system, we received three proposals. Um, we decided to interview the two lowest, uh, proposals, so Altronics and B and M Technical Services. Um, we interviewed both of them and, um, with our engineer and staff. And, um, they both, their bids come in around the same price, so if you look at that table, you can see the base bid, uh, B and M is a little bit higher, um, but then Altronics, uh, their bid, uh, A two and A three is a little bit higher than, so it all kind of shakes out to be about the same price wise. Um, and just, uh, sorry, I'm going all over the place here, but, um, we would like to do additive bid item A two and A three, um, because that will allow us to get a new, um, at our, at our well two and three, we will put the system outside of the wellhouse so that it's not getting chemicals in it, which is, uh, interfering with the mechanical system, um, or electronic system. Um, so that will allow, A two and A three will allow us to do that. Um, and A one, we didn't think we needed, um, that's basically doing a point-to-point wireless bridge and our engineer thought actually that, um, doing an ethernet or maybe a fiber cable would be, uh, a better solution. Um, so after interviewing them, we really were impressed with Altronics. Um, also known as LW Allen, they do our SCADA at the wastewater treatment plant. Um, and they've been great, um, they seemed like they were more capable on handling future, uh, issues or capabilities. For example, there, there's new capabilities coming out with SCADA where you can actually log in on an iPad from home and control the SCADA, um, which we can't do right now, um, and Altronics seem to be more knowledgeable and helpful in possibly upgrading our system to doing that in the future. They also have more techs in the area, which is helpful for any, um, emergency services that we would need. Um, I think, and they just, yeah, breadth of experience, they seemed like they had a little bit more breadth of experience for our needs. So staff and engineers recommend awarding Altronics Control Systems this contract with the base bid plus additive bid items A two and A three for a total of four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars.
What was that number again?
Four sixty-eight, five, six, three.
Four.
Was the money for this, or is it already earmarked in the budget?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
And that's within that number?
Correct.
Perfect.
Yep, yep, these are within our budget.
How much is the CAT six cable? Running that over.
Um, I do not know off the top of my head.
Of our distance between the two points.
I also do not know that off the top of my head, but I can find out for you.
Well, which, which wells?
Uh, well, this is for the wireless bridge between the existing reservoir and the existing booster station.
Oh, and that's right at the tank.
Yeah, that's at our existing area.
Yeah. Okay.
Can I ask Amy, was this, uh, was this the same contractual, uh, the contract we had before, uh, SCADA with, is this the same contract we had with SCADA, the same company, or this is a new one?
Good question, so we actually use B and M currently and we are recommending change to Altronics.
Okay, that, I, I thought so, okay.
Yep, and we've been pretty happy with B and M, but they are a smaller company and, um, I think we just feel future-wise that Altronics is going to be able to handle our needs a little bit better.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thanks.
You know, also require like, what are you doing going on?
Um, not at the village, it'll, I mean, this is all encompassing of what will be needed for the water utility. Um, the specifics on software, I unfortunately don't fully understand that piece, but yeah, they'll, I think.
I think that's, that software's all down at the, at the village, or not the village shop, but the, the
Utility.
Utility shop.
Yeah, they set up a panel and then it'll all be controlled from there.
Yeah.
Touchscreen panel that they use.
Yeah, and those touchscreen panels require like some sort of software to be run on it.
Yeah.
So, you know, I assume that it's built into the price, because
Yeah.
It's, it's like, you know, changing from Internet Explorer to Google or something like that, there's two different softwares and
Right.
It's private companies, or there's just a software to run everything, that way you can get it online at home and you can check things. See him on, your text can just jump online real quick, which is great, um, I just want to show that work.
Yep, it should be inclusive in the price, yeah.
And sorry, we're talking about kind of down in this area?
No, not the wastewater plant, the, um, utility garage.
Utility garage to, that's probably what's saved.
Yep, so that's where the, like, the panel could be. Oh, were you asking about the ethernet cables?
Yeah.
No, that's even at a different location, so that's over where the current reservoir is.
One reservoir up, up on.
Yeah, right here.
Up on.
So it's between this and the booster.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That's gonna be, yeah, that's gonna be super cheap.
But now, when we build a new tank and put in a new booster station, is that, is all this, I'm gonna do the same thing and is that included in that?
It's included in the new reservoir, but then that will, once we build the booster station, they'll have to build a new way to, for those to communicate, but I'm guessing it would be similar to what this would be doing, like some kind of ethernet cable.
Yeah, is that, now I'll be technical, sorry.
You guys are testing my knowledge.
So I'm assuming at least with, in, in, from the current location, you know, where it's all hardwiring, connected to, operated in some way, shape, or form, the new one probably, it's, uh, we're creating here too, it's not like running off a cellular network.
Correct.
Okay, so.
So staff recommends Altronics.
Yeah, between the present point of B and, uh, B and M Technical Services and Altronics, we're looking at like bucks, seven thousand-ish dollars.
Yeah, it's basically.
Just that alone for going, being able to have them have access at home, their response time's gonna be a lot higher, it's, it's gonna be a nice convenience, so.
Yeah. It's not a for sure thing, there's some things that they have to figure out, I guess, with the software itself, like they're still working through that capability, but, um, Altronics seemed more knowledgeable and could adapt to that better than B and M, B and M had no idea about it. So that was kind of a reply for me at least.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the water reservoir S C A D A integrated contracts to Altronics Control Systems.
I second. With, was that with additive two and three?
Oh, so.
I, I knew in your mind, that's what you were thinking, that's back what I wrote, because I was just thinking, yeah. Okay, got it.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
Hearing done, all in favor say aye.
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 Both, motion carries. Item C, consideration discussion future library operational costs, it's on page twenty-seven of your packet.
Amy, do you want to handle on this one? So, operational costs are just something that have come off over the history of the Village and Project. Through different designings, it's come up maybe two or three times at village board meetings, just in response to our applying for this grant itself. So we just wanted to let the village board know that we're gathering these costs, that we know that it's going to be more expensive and that we need to have a plan in order to address this because the village can't put all of the extra costs that come with the new library, so this just lays out some of the costs that we've gathered and some of our plans for meeting those goals of making up the operation difference.
May I interject? Um, Amy, Amy, I just want to commend you, I, I thank you for that, um, it's something that we have asked for, for a long time and you were, um, gracious enough to give us some very good specifics on it. I do have, uh, just a few comments, um, I was, I think that I had heard that you do have furniture, correct, uh, being stored somewhere?
Um, that there were bookcases that were stored at the Swiss Center of North America and I believe that they had asked us before I became director to move that out and I think that was discarded, um, I don't, I'll double check, but I don't think we have that anymore, no.
Okay, those were just some, th- there were some considerations I had for, you know, the cost of, uh, furniture and then janitorial and maintenance, if, if that's necessary, if we needed more money for operating supplies for programming, and I understand that this is just, um, you know, this is just the beginning and that it might change along the way. I do want to, uh, just say that I, I'm, I'm, I'm an advocate of grants, don't get me wrong, but I, I don't want to, uh, set my sails to the inconsistent wind of a grant, assuming that it's going to happen every year, so we have to, you know, in some ways we have to take that out of the equation and just see what's there that we have, I mean, I wouldn't want to build a bigger home based on the fact that my godmother was maybe going to give us the money down the road, so I, I, you know, and, and you did that, you did a good job of, of showing us exactly what you have that's visible and, um, if we get a grant, great, if we don't, we still can operate, so, um, thank you for that.
And also I'd just like to say Peggy, the grants that we're talking about would be capital grants that we could use towards the building projects so that we could transfer from funds from our C F S W capital account into the endowing account and that would allow us funds that come every year regardless, um, so that's, it's not like we will be relying on grants every year to fund our operations, we're looking to build that endowment, so we have a steady stream of operational costs every single year.
Yeah, I, I read that portion and, and that's great, I just, um, you know, I, I've seen people rely on grants that never came through and then, um, you know, it gets people in a financial, uh,
Right.
corner, so, yeah, thanks for that.
Awesome.
The same, I need an explanation on the insurance thing, you've got estimated amount of two thousand, then you're saying over here you're paying eight thousand a year insurance.
So that, these are increased costs, so right now we're paying eight thousand dollars a year.
Oh.
So now that is actually an old estimate, I'm still waiting for, to hear from Ryan Burns from Bear Insurance for the updated Boston cap. Um, so likely it may be more than two thousand dollars additional a year, I'm still waiting for an update. Well, and insurance increases, I mean, it's like, it's just a law, they can't tell me until, and then the bill was maybe.
That's what Ryan said, he said, I really, you pulling a number out of the air, I said, estimate high, so, you know.
I assume the weekly cleaning is the annual cost.
Definitely annual cost. I will, I'll do it, yeah. I thought it was worth it, we can do that quick. Okay.
Okay. Um, I guess I'm just a discussion, I don't, you know, you know. Um, hey, item B, consideration discussion ordinance twenty-four dash zero nine, commence section one, seven, nine, dash, four, C, one, municipal village new glares. Destruction of nonchalant weeds, it's on twenty-nine in your packet.
The recommendation from our weed commissioner to add poison them laws to our nonchalant weed laws.
He's very passionate, very passionate.
Thank you.
The mission of these one.
Yeah.
I'm gonna go ahead and approve ordinance twenty-four oh nine to amend the section one seventy-nine, four, C, one.
I second.
Amy, I have a motion in second and any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, motion carries. Item E, consideration discussion review, she's twenty-four dash sixteen, per four from the full-time public works labor. Lauren?
This is the wrong resolution.
What?
How did that happen? Actually, I'll be on the wrong one. Well, uh, so this, we have the wrong resolution open here. If you, yeah, probably should, um, so Matthew Halverson did agree to come back to the village, um, and so we're very excited about that, Matthew's been great and staff member here. Um, you may remember that we increased his wage to twenty-five dollars an hour, I talked with him, now that he's coming back and he agreed to go back down to twenty-three dollars an hour. Um, and his start date would be next Friday.
And you put the whole one in there.
I did.
First up.
Correct, yeah, I don't know how I did that.
You got the right.
So we'll print out the right ones, you guys see it where you.
Five sixteen is right here.
So if he comes back, it'll be only gap, we have one more labor and then director, but, yeah. And we just had interviews on Fridays, we have two good candidates, I'm talking with them this week, we have some follow-up questions, but I'm hopeful we'll get another person in here by the end of the month, okay, yeah.
You did say you were also talking to potential clients, right, so no hope?
Um, he has not applied.
Okay.
Uh, he did mention interest at one point, I think there's a little bit of heart feeling to him specifically, um, just given that he gave us no notice at all, um, so, that's kind of our last chance, yeah.
Well, it sounds like we're lucky to have Matthew back.
Yes.
Okay, so you need one of us to motion to approve, resolution twenty-four dash sixteen, appointment for full-time public works labor, Matthew Albersen?
Yep.
Second.
Aye. Here we have a motion in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both, motion carries. Item matter, consideration discussion, build a logo review, three, one.
This is a fun one, so, um, yeah, we have two logo ideas, uh, we've worked with a graphic designer on a couple iterations, um, Phil C and I really liked cons, the first one, concept one, as kind of our main builder new glares logo. Uh, and then
Logo.
The second one, uh, we just thought was very cute, it could be used for other things as well.
Yeah, not paid here.
As the, yeah, not as the main one. Yeah, but it could be, you know, I don't know, we don't really know what it is, it's kind of a cute, I, I kind of like the village hall being an icon or something, so that could be used for other things, but yeah, I, I think like.
More of not professional kind of, if you sponsor something in the community or whatever.
So.
Hey, I'm gonna throw my two cents in, can I do that? Um, I personally think the, the logo needs more, uh, needs to be more dimensional, I think it needs a background color. I also think it needs some action and you can get that through shadowing. Um, and I also think that there should be something there to show, um, that we're an American city, uh, an American village, um, with, uh, a Swiss twist, um, some sort, I don't know what, you know, I don't know what you're gonna do in there, but personally, and again, it's like picking pillows for your couch, the guys that are sitting at that table probably aren't gonna say anything, but, uh, um, I, I, I would, I don't know, I guess I would like it to be a little bit more, um, uh, have a little more depth to it, it seems, it seems almost like a sticker on a piece of paper, I hate to say that because somebody worked hard on it, but, um, a li- a little more depth maybe, and that's just my opinion, we don't have to agree to it at that, at all.
Yeah, our, our graphic designer, um, shared with me that usually you go for a little bit more simple, so not shading and not a lot of colors just for ease of, you know, putting it on certain things and not having to deal with, you know, all the, uh, details of the logo, she said a lot of more like professional, modern logos look more like this. Um, but, I mean, I think I'm open to feedback that I could share with her if, if other people feel the same that it needs a little bit more. Uh, just things like, you know, if we have employee polos, you know, we want something simple, not something with like a ton of colors and things going on.
Right, you probably want to work just with three colors, um, and there's two there. Um, I think you could bring out the, the logo more if you had some sort of, uh, background to it, not necessarily white, but, um, you know, if you put it over some other color or black, I, I know that in advertising usually work with three colors and then the major, uh, logo would have just a whole little bit of shading to it, but again, I'm, I only taught it, I don't, I'm not the professional.
If you're looking for like an American feel or add, added to it, because I can see that being a complaint from some of our residents, I know some that have complained in regards to when we had all Swiss flags down the mains, main road during festivals, it was like all, all Swiss, no American, you know, you know, yeah, um, a simple recommendation for that top logo, that one right there, is make two shields kind of overlapping with each other, merry flag left, Swiss flag right. Still keeps the same kind of design, um, but it's still gonna be that same sort of professionalism, it's still good on a polo, it's still, you know, it adds that extra little bit. Just random recommendation to appease everyone's side.
Well, I think a big reason we incented designing the shield was simply because in the fifteen thousand different logos we've had.
Yeah, we have.
The shield isn't usually almost all of them, so, but if we want to not go with the shield at all, um, or, you know, if we wanted to change pace, I, I think that was the only reason really included in the beginning is just to the back.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't go away from the shield at all, it's just, you know, add, you know, add the American one in there then too, that way we don't have, you know, confusion or complaints or whatever, but, yeah, you know, it, but like you said with, when talking with her, it's a very, it's sleek, it's, it'll add on to pieces of paper up in the corners fairly nicely. Um, so based off what I'm seeing, you know, I, I do like that top one better, at least for a professional approach. I could see the village of New Glares being on, you know, just other polos and stuff like that here too, for that, that lower one. Um, but either of them are, are equally fine, in my opinion.
The typeface is pretty severe.
We do have our election, our election markers, um, currently wear, um, red button-down shirts with a version of the logo from way back. Oh, yeah, so, that, you know, that's what I think, Peggy, I get what you're saying, I think, you know, if we would put this on a red shirt, obviously the white behind the red text would have to be there, or we have, and, I mean, there would be more dimension depending on what we put it on, I think this is just what it would look like on a piece of letter, yeah.
I mean, I think it's super modern from a branding perspective, I like it, that is, uh, I haven't heard any of the feedback, because I haven't been here that long, so if there is feedback, you know, I get that as well, um, I do, do you kind of like the font in the second one better?
Not the rest of the second one, I mean, I think the building is cute, but, um, but I do think this is from a branding perspective, it's super clean, super crisp.
I think a little century, yeah, it is.
I do too, I do too. I do too. All of my, I will get it fixed, my office, our century jack with labels, nothing else. Little things. Yeah, she recommends sans serif, you can think like that.
Is that the most like the random letter or?
Well, it's just no, like, um, little like hats on the, you know what I mean, like no hats on the font, like, very clean. Yes, yeah, very blockish, um, I think that's like cleaner and looks nice and, yeah, a little bit more modern.
What's the next step for this, so you're gonna go back with Hubert and she tweets a little?
Yeah, yeah. And obviously I feel like logos are hard to all agree on, you know, everyone has their own premises, but I think we can all get behind something, that would be great, but yeah, I can definitely share some feedback on, maybe we can get a couple options in the draft and then we can bring that back. Well, we won't be like replacing if we just order letterhead and not gonna go up, just, but there are like things that, like email signatures, we all have a pretty, you know, like just, it's stuff like that, that would be, cost nothing to make everybody's.
Beautiful.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Look at Times Wall or something like that for a picture.
Yeah, the, I was, I mentioned, uh, when you left that, uh, the graphic designer recommends sans serif, so no, you know, I don't know, you might call it serifs. And I know, like, I didn't love.
I'm just telling what I, I think this is a very severe thing and does not depict village. That typeface.
Yeah, it's definitely.
We used to have one, we, I would, uh, typeface on the front of the bank was three-dimensional stuff, and everybody said it was Swiss, well, it turned out it's not Swiss, but nevertheless, that was the image at the time, and I, I think there's some considerable value in our image and that concerns me, that we've got a typeface that's so severe.
Well, can we kind of tweak it a little bit and bring it back again? Let's do it right away. Okay. Move on. Personal and fine events, consideration discussion, DC department staff and security teams for your packet. Uh, this we've been doing with Jeff, but he's been shorthanded for the last year and a half, Jeff?
Yeah, it's been, it's been short, almost thirteen years now.
What?
For the last year and a half since I've been chief, but we've just worked for about thirteen years now.
Yeah. And he's got, yeah, she only, a couple of officers want to take the case, and one, one officer might get called up.
And also Skylar, and all, and he's on his own now, so it's, um, three hundred and twenty, I was doing like a hundred and sixty, trying to fill with full-time work, partners myself, but there is a lot of occasions, they, they all have. trying to fill with full-time work, part-timers myself, but there is a lot of occasions, they, they all have patients comment. The other thing I told everybody is, we're probably gonna lose one of our officers in a couple months, he's more likely to be getting activated, so he's gonna be gone for, I mean, almost six months, and I have another one that also needs to have a, uh, a surgery that he could be out two weeks, two months. So, when it hits fall, October, we can be down to a month.
Assuming we're active, we're either in, right?
I do that, I want to answer. Okay, and he's got some applicants, but.
Oh, yeah, we've got three applicants, one's probably gonna be a known, so they get an email back from the state, and then, uh, the other two need to be academy. It's posted to August fall. Trying to get somebody to jump show. Other department, I really don't want to send one to the academy, it's spot reserved in December, so they go to, if we hire somebody, they need the academy, they'll be gone for four months for the academy, and then three months for training, so we're looking at the end of next summer before we're full staff.
There's no guarantee, you could pay for them to go to the academy, if they don't pass.
Don't pass.
You're out.
And that's what a lot of agencies do, I shouldn't say a lot, but it's happening. You're not making it under the graph, now Albany just went to the academy, she's worked about three weeks and hasn't shown back to us.
And there's nothing we can do to like make them pay back that much, so?
You can try, but, uh, via, like, the Chiefs Conference, but I'm Beast and Walker. He says nothing you can do, you're gonna have a signing contract, you scare him, but, you know, they're gonna get it.
What this is, is paying Jeff just straight time, thirty hours a month.
It's if I need your cover shifts and things like that, people are often part-timers aren't. The other, the one I got is Mark Binger, he's a retired guy from Sheriff's Department, he can only work eleven hundred and ninety-nine hours. He's already worked one full year since he retired, so the way his hours work every pay period, if he worked fifty hours last pay period, and was fifty hours come off, doesn't restart at the beginning of the year, well, his hours are right there right now, and he didn't work that much, works again like he did again, so now I lose him, I can't work him seventy, eighty, ninety hours. That's what I'm nervous, if we start losing people or, um, you know, they, they do activate the one, we should be really near.
Okay, we need a motion on this. So.
Second.
Thank you, second.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? None, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. She carries. Is there anything else on the board?
I wasn't here at the beginning, but once again, uh, a police department on public works were out at midnight cleaning up the streets, where half of the streets seemed to run down the hill.
There, there was one section that was over eight feet long. Roll up the screen.
How did you test that?
I actually got my tape, and I tried to watch you, but you're.
Just imagine your fingers just.
Left that when it was in our C I P for, now, twenty eight, so we might want to look at, we do that up.
I've never seen that they flooded in my twenty-three years here, that was really bad.
That storm sewer is extremely undersized. Okay.
Okay. Nothing else, they are adjourned.
Thank you.
You.